Good evening. It's 6:13. I apologize for our little bit late delay in getting started tonight. We're still waiting for our city attorney to join us here, but I'm going to go ahead and start out and wait for him to catch up with us. We've just come from closed session over at the wastewater treatment plant, and we will actually be going back into closed session after this regular open session meeting. So, I'm going to call together to order now the regular session meeting for 6:00 PM on May 16th, Monday of the Crescent City City Council. And, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Westfall.
Here.
Councilmember Shaloon.
Here.
Councilmember Aneah.
Here.
Mayor Protem Murray.
Here.
And Mayor Slert.
I'm here, thank you. And I would like to just offer the welcome back, Mr. Aneah. We missed you last session. And I'd like to welcome those that are here in person tonight, and then those that are be watching through the via the live stream. I'm sorry to report, though, that the educational channel, Channel 4 TV, the server is down, so indefinitely you will not be able to see the proceedings of the city council or the Board of Supervisors until which time they fix that server problem. So, and we'll get a report out from Mr. Black when he joins us. So, at this time, Ms. Shaloon, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, for acknowledgements tonight, we have a proclamation of the City Council of Crescent City proclaiming foster parent appreciation during National Foster Care Month, May 2011. And I'll offer the proclamation at this time. A proclamation in recognition of foster parent appreciation during National Foster Care Month, May 2011. Whereas, the family serves as the primary source of love, identity, self-esteem and support, and is the very foundation of our communities and our county. And whereas, in Delnart County, there are 63 children and youth in foster care who deserve the best opportunities that can be provided, as well as safe, secure and stable home, possessing the compassion and nature of a foster family. And whereas, all children and youth in foster care need a positive, meaningful connection to a caring adult who becomes a supportive and lasting presence in their lives. And whereas, dedicated foster families help fulfill a vital role by providing guidance, stability and love, which helps children and families heal and reconnect, resulting in the launch of young people into successful adulthood. And whereas, dedicated foster families frequently adopt foster children, resulting in a continuous greater need for more foster families. And whereas, there are countless individuals, public and private organizations, and often unsung heroes, who work to increase public awareness of the needs of children and in leaving foster care. And whereas, well as the enduring and valuable contribution of foster parents, kinship, adoptive homes, the foster care system is only as good as those who choose to be part of it. Now therefore it, now therefore be it resolved that the Crescent City City Council hereby proclaim foster parent appreciation during Foster Care Month in Delnart County, and urge all citizens to join us in helping to change a lifetime of a child or youth in foster care by volunteering their talents and energies on behalf of children in foster care, foster parents, and the child welfare, and other committed professionals, professional staff working with them this month and throughout the year. Signed by myself, Charles Slert, Mayor. And I understand that Crystal and Michelle are here to receive this proclamation.
I just wanted to say thank you. I brought along two of my friends today. I've been a foster parent for about nine to 10 years, and we probably had 50 to 75 kids in our home. Thank you for acknowledging us, because sometimes the kids and us, we all feel like we're forgotten, but, you know, they're our future, so, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Council, would you like to offer any words?
I just wanted to say that we, I had asked to have this put on the schedule. We, our agenda, rather, we had honored the foster parent education system at our last council meeting. And as Michelle said, it's good to recognize our foster parents, because they are the ones that do the heavy lifting for us and for the children. So, I greatly appreciate it and greatly appreciate Crystal Margatane. She's the program manager for the Social Services Branch of DHHS, and she's here tonight as well. And she works with the foster families, so, and the children, of course. So, thank you both, and thank you, girls.
Great. Any other?
I just would like to say thank you. You're definitely not forgotten. I served on the CASA board and was also a CASA advocate for many years. Have worked with Crystal through that system, and hats off to anybody that takes it takes the time and has a love in their heart to give those kids a second chance. So, it's very important, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Westfall?
I guess I'd better put this on. So much for everything that you do. I know that oftentimes it's a thankless job, huh? But in the end, it's worth more than anything. So, thank you.
Mr. Aneah?
I just wanted to say thank you, too. I know it's a very difficult job, and thank you for caring.
And I would salute you for your commitment, because it does make a difference in kids' lives in the long run. So, thank you. Great. Okay. At this time, we'll move on to item consent calendar. And there's three items, Items 4, 5 and 6. Item 4 is approval of the regular meeting minutes of May 2nd, 2011, for the Crescent City Council meeting. And then, Item 5, approval of the warrant claims list for the period May 3 through May 16, 2011. And then, Item 6, approval of the biweekly payroll reports for the period ending May 7th, paid May 13, 2011.
Move to approve.
I have some corrections and additions to the minutes.
Okay, please.
On page 3, about two-thirds of the way down, Councilmember Westfall gave her opinion of the impression Crescent City has on visitors. I'd like the record to include that, as I mentioned last meeting, although I agree in concept with TOT being reinvested in things like the Visitors Bureau, the area, this area puts the cart before the horse. If we had spent $150,000 instead for the past two years on charming up our city, creating jobs to build park benches, waste receptacles, hanging flower baskets, working on a theme, getting more businesses to fill our, to occupy our vacant buildings, then when people visit the redwoods, they'll have something else to do, to stay here longer. So, I'd like that added. Secondly, on number...
Is that what you actually said in the meeting?
Yes. Number 17, the solid waste report, page 6, about 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Lines down, Councilmember Westfall spoke on several issues regarding their budget. I'd like this added to the record, that I thought stipends at 300 a month and 75 per meeting was obscene. Who else in this county makes that kind of money? $1 million in grants, where's the breakdown? Why are there levels higher than the county's levels? If we got rid of this board bureaucracy, rates would go down from $129/10 to $85 a ton. There were two mandated obligations that I saw rather than five. Either the city or the county could absorb the operation overall. Taxpayers not being well-served, accounting must be updated, doing things in pencil subjects to possible pilfering. Consider including yearly cycle of grand jury oversight, contracting with a professional grant writer, problem with the director not putting in what he does on a daily basis. And then on, um, let's see, was that it? Two stipends. And I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Ms. Westfall, I would offer this, that it's my understanding that the meeting minutes are supposed to be generic or general, and that they're not supposed to be an actual transcript of the proceedings. The, there's actually a copy of the actual proceedings on record at the city. And I guess the point that I make is I think we would probably all feel, I mean, when I read, it was the meeting minutes, it was a generalization to represent the general conversations and dialogues. But I assure you, it didn't, it doesn't reflect all of the items that I offered or that the other councilmembers also offered. So, the charge or the challenge is to try to brush a broad stroke that hits on the key issues, but knowing that there's a full backup through the DVD and the audio and the video.
We discovered through grand jury hearings that the minutes were really lacking regarding the solid waste. And so, in certain areas, I would just ask your indulgence that these things be added to the minutes.
Grand, I think you're incorrect. The grand jury actually, in their investigations into the wastewater treatment plant, said that our minute meetings were not as informative as they would have liked. However, they were provided with the tapes, and they chose not to listen to the tapes.
I think part of it is just the cumber, it is so cumbersome to try to exactly reflect everything, that it's almost nearly impossible without doing actual court reporting, which is not what this is supposed to be about or reflect. But I guess I would offer, Ms. Patch, if you would review and see if the general substance is accurate or adequate.
Yes, I will be happy to. And I do appreciate your comments, because I remember when I first started, I was deputy clerk, we had 17-page minutes. And I did review what was done in the past before the grand jury, and it was rather limited, so I've managed to get a general sense like you've stated. So, I do appreciate your comments.
Well, and part of it also is that you're part-time.
Yes, sir.
Right?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, though.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So, we have the motion.
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Aneah, yes.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, so the consent calendar carries unanimously 5 to nothing. At this time, we're going to have a public hearings, item number 7. And there's two parts, an item A and an item B. It has to do with hold a public hearing to consider the 2010-11 application for Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Planning and Technical Assistance Allocation Funds. And then, Item B is consider and/or adopt a resolution regarding those CDBG grant agreements. And at this time, I'm going to recuse myself and turn it over to Mayor Protem Murray to lead us through the public hearings. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Did you open the public hearing?
Yes, we'll open it up for a public hearing and have comments from our interim city manager, Janine Galatioto.
Yes, we're asking the council today to approve the resolution, approving an application for funding for a planning technical assistance grant for three projects. One project is, would be dedicated for the Crescent City Harbor to continue the seafood processing plant, with a study that had been ongoing, but due to the recent tsunami in March, there's been some delay. And in order for us to have a time extension and some more, also some more time that we need to have, our grant... more, also some more time that we need to have our grant writer participate in that and write up, and find some more participants who've got job creation and job retention, we need to extend that, and we've asked for $10,000 additional in planning technical assistance money for that. Then, there's $50,000 that we're, that we are requesting to do a master plan for the beachfront park, front street design, and also water conservation and energy efficiency with the idea of routing heated water through the park to heat the pool, and also the air and the water, but not use the water. I want to be specific about that. I plan on using wastewater treatment water at the pool. And, and then, recirculating it and using it for irrigation in the beachfront park. So, that study, we're requesting $50,000 for. And the last one is for $40,000 to do the airport projects that are basically the terminal expansion, the terminal remodel. So, those are before you today, and we're requesting that you approve them.
Any questions?
And I'm willing to answer any questions.
No comments from the council? Okay. We'll open this up for public comment, then, since it's a public hearing. Mr. Miles?
My name's Richard Miles, I'm a resident of the city. I'd like to make a general comment about these current allocations, and I have another question that I'll get to when I'm done making my comment. It's my understanding that anytime we receive these funds from the state, the idea of the federal, federal government giving states these awards in the first place is to try to benefit low-income people, to create jobs within city boundaries and county boundaries for that purpose. I believe doing something in beachfront park, saving the city money on hitting the pool, and recycling the gray water to water the park, makes a lot of sense. And the reason is, it attracts tourism, something both the Chamber and the Tourists Bureau are trying to accomplish here. So, in reality, it really does create jobs for our low-income people. I've always said, ever since my city joined the airport authority, it was time for the city to find a way to chip in funds for the airport. The reason is, for two reasons. First thing, without an airport, and a functioning airport, it's hard to get out of here, it's hard to attract tourists, and in some ways, a new terminal building would create jobs, too, if we would think about adding a restaurant to it, something that the commissioners have not thought about. What bothers me is that the harbor's outside the city limits. Why are we fixing a building that belongs to the harbor, that they haven't taken care of for years, and that last year, they finally got a commitment from the Leasee of that building, he was going to stay there? I think it's a pet project of one member of my city council, and I don't think it's going to create a lot of jobs.
Thank you, Richard.
But what really bothers me...
Your time's up, could you wrap it up, please?
Yes. Whatever happened to the CBG funds that the state turned down on the park in the first place?
Thank you. We can't answer your questions. Thank you.
You can't?
Not during public comment.
Well, I'll make it during the other public comments. I want to know where that funding went.
Do we have any other public comments? If not, I'll bring it back to the board.
Counsel?
Counselor Murray, can I just, one of the, one of the key aspects of two of these grants, two of these projects, actually, is...
This is that phone call?
Yes, no. Is the fact that they will, you're looking at the job creation, job retention, one at the seafood processing plant, and the other one at the airport. So, both of those are economic development. The other one is obviously a benefit of public service.
Precisely, which is why we wanted to do the OTC in the first place.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that.
Clarification on the seafood processing plant, is that separate from Albers Seafood, or is that...
Well, it's that plant, yes. It's not his plant, it's the harbor actually owns the plant. He leases it from the harbor.
Okay. I guess I'm, I have the same question that Richard Miles has, and that is, why would we give our funds to a harbor project?
Because the harbor employs people that work within the city, could work within the city, and it also brings income into the city once we have those jobs.
I understand that, but why isn't the harbor doing this?
Because the harbor can't apply.
They can't apply for these funds.
Oh, okay.
Only the city and the county can apply for these funds.
All right.
And the city already had this grant, and we're extending it, is what we're basically doing for another $10,000.
Okay.
Because of the interruption during the tsunami.
Thank you for the clarification.
Very well. We had already approved the original over-the-counter grant, which is OTC.
For the planning technical assistance, yes.
I move to approve Resolution 2011-19, approving an application and contract execution funding from the PTA allocation of the state community development block grant program, authorizing the execution of the grant agreement and any amendments thereto with the state of California.
Second.
Could you please pull the vote?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Westphal?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Councilmember Anya?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Murray?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
No, he's for both, I think.
I thought we just did.
Isn't there B?
B was the resolution.
Oh, sorry.
Hey, we're done.
Guess I didn't look close enough.
I believe that the phone call is for Item Number 13.
I, yes, yes, I, Item Number 14?
There is no item.
I only have...
Item 13. There's no Item Number 14.
That's what I meant.
So, you want to take this out of order?
I just found out about it at the meeting.
I'd like to take Item Number 13 out of order, please.
Mayor Slert, I have the phone call that you've been waiting for.
Oh, very good.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem.
My pleasure.
Okay. So, we're going to, with the council's permission, move to Item Number 13 on the agenda.
May I ask that before we have the unidentified person on the phone speak, could you give us a little history as to what this is about?
Absolutely.
Great.
Janine, do you want to kick it off, or I'd be happy to kick off either? Okay. On the, on the phone is Mr. Fred Kelly, who's, I'm sorry, Mr. Fred Kelly Grant, who's an attorney expert, and has a storied history of successes throughout the country, and I was pleased enough to get to meet him and hear him at a recent tea party, where he made a presentation for a couple hours, and I found him very informative, knowledgeable, and inspiring, and it's regarding local communities and our rights as local communities relative to the federal government and other federal authorities. So, I also learned that there's actually a legal standing and formal coordination process between local governing agencies and the federal authorities, which I was not aware of. And, just in follow-up, on March 12th, the, myself and the council met with the other elected representatives in the community, and our north state representatives that were here in response to the March 11th tsunami, and we pledged collectively our support to our harbor colleagues and the local fishermen relative to being supportive in the recovery of our harbor. And, so, it's, it's the general feeling of the community that time is of essence, and I've heard repeatedly, people have approached me and said they were concerned that we're going to lose or miss this coming crabbing season, and that that would actually be very detrimental to our entire community, because we're small and we're so interrelated. So, through this quote-unquote "coordination" process, it seems to be an appropriate way on the part of the city to consider the adoption of this coordination process, to be able to be supportive of our harbor partners, because we're all in this recovery together. And I would just mention that there's a couple harbor commissioners here tonight, and I would welcome them to offer at the public comment their thoughts, and I also see Supervisor Hemmingson is here, and I make note of that, in that he's also familiar with this cooperation process, and the county had adopted this coordination process several years ago, and it was a much more involved document than the more recent coordination process resolution which is being proposed tonight. So, that's kind of my understanding of it.
I think Mr. Hemmingson will concur that having such policy doesn't mean much when trying to get federal agencies to coordinate with you locally before they take action.
And I would offer that, we had a meeting that was called by the local authorities a couple weeks ago that I had forgotten to report about, and I was here in attendance in the Flynn Center with our interim city manager, Janine, and department heads from the city, public works, and the, it was a presentation by FEMA, and basically, they were indicating, okay, we're here, we're in charge, and this is what you have to do. We went through something like an hour, hour and a half presentation of the process, which was mind-boggling. There was so many layers of bureaucracy, and so, it's my assessment, and, I mean, we had a councilperson, Shalong, and I had a ad hoc committee meeting this last week with Elk Valley Rancheria, and the first thing out of their mouth when we had the meeting was, are we going to miss the crabbing season this year at the harbor because of the lack of ability to respond and recover? And we said we were going to do everything we could from the city's point of view to try to help our harbor colleagues in partnership, and be of assistance to help move things forward. And I mean, if you take it at face value, you have the Coastal Commission, you have the Department of Fish and Game, Cal EMA, FEMA, and so on. And Mr. Grant would know all of these organizations better than ourselves, but they all have their interest, and they all have their layers of bureaucracy, and if, if it takes us eight weeks to assess what the materials are, if there's contamination in the filtration that occurred in the inner basin, if it takes eight, or 12 weeks, eight weeks, 12 weeks to find that out, apparently, they have to do a test where they have to put living organisms in test tubes and see how they respond, and if they live or if they die, and what they die from if they die. So, meantime, we're trying to get permits and move the actual construction process forward, and there's so many variables, and we can't sit and wait for six months for the harbor, maybe the inner harbor, to be dredged, so that maybe we could put some new flotation dock devices, or some leased or rented docks in place to have something to moor to. So, it's so complicated. So, it just felt, from our point of view, that to the degree we could lend our assistance to the harbor, and the potential of having this resolution in place, the county already has in place, if we have it in place with the city, and then, the harbor also has it in place, that we're sending a unified message to all of our partners, including the federal partners, that, and Mr. Fred Kelly Grant made it clear that in doing so, working with your partners in creating this coordination process, that you identify upfront what your objective is. And the objective in that perfect world would be to have the harbor fully functioning on some level, whatever that is, by mid-November, and then, if you work back from there, these are the events that have to occur to make that happen. And, that's a little different approach than saying, well, we have to get this permit, and then, we have to do these tests, and then, we have to get this permit, and that at the end of the day, you're several months or years down the road. Keeping in mind that with the multiple challenges, we've been delayed five years in getting the recovery from the 2006 tsunami event. So, that can't happen again for this community, the harbor, the city, and the county. So, is, anything, anybody would like to offer? Mr. Black?
Any questions you might have?
So, I have, I have a comment.
Please.
So, we're just asserting our legal standing, as it says, that the federal and state governments have to include us in their decision-making, or in their, maybe not decision-making, but in their process.
Yeah. I think what we're saying is that our plans are on a co-equal footing with their plans, and they have to coordinate their plans with ours.
Good, okay.
Yeah.
It's fine, I'm fine with that.
What's the consequence if they don't?
Well, I would let Mr. Grant respond to that at some point in the conversation, but I think the ideal is to take it higher up in the bureaucratic chain of command if we're not getting coordination at the level that we're dealing with, all the way up to the Department of Justice, request that the attorneys, the agency attorneys, get involved to direct the agencies to coordinate with us.
That's, I mean, I agree with everything you said, and it sounds good. I wasn't at the meeting that you're referring to, but I will say that from March 11th through, you know, recently, I felt like all the agencies were very cooperative and very informative, and worked really well with all of us on a local level, and I really appreciated the communication that we got in that entire process.
I think that's substantially, substantially the case. Is Fred, are you there, Fred?
Yes, I am.
We can hear you. Could you maybe in three or five minutes' time, give an overview of the coordination process and the value that it would represent for the city being a partner with the harbor?
Yes, the coordination process is just that, it's a process that was established by Congress in 1976, and it requires every federal agency, and it also requires, through various means, state agencies that receive federal funds, to coordinate with local government at any level, any district, any city, any county. And the coordination definition by Congress is that the agency has... And the coordination definition by Congress is that the agency has, must give quick and meaningful participation to local government in developing maintenance, in developing management actions or policies or plans. And that they have to use every practicable means, that's the wording of the statute, to reach consistency with, with local government. Now, basically what that means in real life is that it puts local government at the table on a, and as near an equal basis for negotiating as you could possibly have through the language of the Congress and the Council on Environmental Quality. In California, you have several statutes also that require state agencies to coordinate with local government. What the coordination process is used for is to avoid litigation if possible and the awful costs of it, and also to speed up the time. It's been very effective in permitting cases where permits are involved. Permits from, from the one extreme of grazing permits, which can be the most convoluted type to be issued, we've actually saved two grazing allotments because we went to the time that was necessary for the rancher to turn out his cattle or be out of business and backed up to those decision points where the agency had to make decisions by a certain date in order to meet that deadline. And on both occasions, we managed to speed the time up once by five days, once by three weeks, but it got it done before the deadline. Other permits, wetlands, development and so on, we've managed to shorten the time. The purpose always is to shorten the time and to cut out the bureaucracy and the red tape that clogs everything up. We've, we shortened the time once with the Corps of Engineers with regard to allowing the dredging around docks in a small town in Oahu County so that they could put on the one event of the year that earns money for them, speedboat races in the Snake River, which is a minor thing compared to what you're talking about there. But one of the things that, that seems to make no difference is how major the issue is. It can be the simplest to the, to the, to the most complex. And the most complex was the Trans-Texas Corridor where we caused the governor to withdraw taking of a corridor a quarter mile wide through an entire county that would have ruined the county. Now, it took us 27 months there, but the point is they already had made their decision about putting the roadway in and we had to go about the business of setting it aside. It's, it's one of those things where I, I believe that it's more effective when you have multiple units of local government seeking the same goal as with the harbor commissioner and the city and the county and frankly, any other districts like the school district or any other districts that rely on the economy to be joined in because it, it gets an impact to higher officials in state government on each level, at the educational level, at the school board level, at the county level, and at the city and harbor commission and even airport level. So what you would be doing is by, in parallel, you would be insisting that a multiple of agencies come in to coordinate with you to speed up the process. I, I really don't like to lose and so if I didn't think that we could be successful in speeding the process, I wouldn't suggest that we come in because it would not do, it would do none of you any good if the process of coordination lengthened the process. I just, I've never seen it lengthen it and so I, I believe that we can, we can accomplish something for you.
Very good, thank you. I appreciate those words. If I could open it up for public comment, Mr. Hemmingson, would you like to?
Are you gonna do that with him still on the phone?
I think so. If you can, Fred, can you stay with us for a little bit?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, Jerry.
Good evening, Jerry Hemmingson, Delmar County Board of Supervisors. I don't know if I've given Kelly the wrong impression of coordination. It's, I think it's a necessary thing because I wasn't very good at it or didn't have the staff or help like I think Fred can, can help us with. I think that, I think it's a necessary thing. I think it's, it's certainly worth a shot. I'm all in favor of it. It's, you know, it's a process that we've had some minor successes with, we're still using it or attempting to use it. We're having a little bit of a difficult time with, with the Forest Service, but actually Fred on the outside has gotten the Forest Service to recognize that they need to start coordinating with counties. So we're hopeful that that's going to be much more successful at this point. So he's, even though he's not working for us per se, he's worked for somebody and now they're accepting the, the coordination in the Forest Service. So we've got Randy Moore to agree that, yeah, we need to coordinate with you.
Very good.
I don't know how far you want to go.
That was my point. You and I have had that conversation before.
It's very difficult. They, they, they ignore you. They will just flat ignore you. And you need to get to that level and that's the part that I think Fred really brings to this, is he knows the next level to go to. And if he doesn't get action there, then he knows the next level to go to until he gets results. It's very difficult when, whenever, you know, this is not my full-time job, so I've got other things to do and staff has other things to do and so it, it kind of gets lost in the way. And we really need to have somebody to get focused in on this and, and get us to the point where, where we need to be so that we can all use it.
Very good.
Thanks.
Thank you so much, Jerry. Harbor Commissioner Phillips?
Thank you. It's good to hear your voice again, Fred. My name is Ron Phillips. I live in the county and I'm a harbor commissioner. Last Wednesday night, we had a special meeting. Two items were on the agenda. One was moving the plan for reconstruction of the harbor from 60% to 75%, which was good news for all of us. And we've been promised that somewhere around the middle of June, we'll have 100% plan so we can go out to bid for construction. So we're moving right along, but one of the problems we have, oh, by the way, the other thing on the agenda was that we did approve a resolution five to nothing to have a coordination policy. So at our meeting, we, we had a lot of discussion about what the harbor commissioner, or harbor master had found. We had a number of questions. We sent them off. We, we had a committee get together, meet with Rich. He formulated some, a number of questions. We sent them off Friday afternoon. We got a response today. We have a meeting tomorrow. We're gonna meet, we have a special meeting at 5:30 to go over everything and hopefully we'll make a decision and Fred will be helping us out. I don't know, I think you need to pass it. I think we all need to be on board. I know the county's on board and we can get the city and harbor's already on board. So let's do the right thing and, you know, I, Kelly, I know we've, we've, we've worked with these people and they say one thing, but, you know, when you have to go out and do testing 12, 12 different sites in, in the harbor on material that was brought in, you know, on a tsunami basis, because 90% of that silt there is, was brought in. So, you know, we'd like, like to just take it right back out. I mean, I've always questioned, what happened if we had another tsunami and it all went out? Who would the water board sue? You know? So.
Well, and I think we actually had a conversation the other day at IGRC, if I recall, about on the barrier islands, when they have a hurricane, they, they have entire islands of sand that are shifted and then they have to be put back into place and they call it sand debris and they just do it. And so that's kind of the difference between the East Coast and what we deal with, with the West Coast and Coastal Commission and various.
Okay, thanks, thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Miles?
Could I make a comment about the Forest Service?
Please.
We were getting some real pushback from the Forest Service in California. And so through former Governor Andres of Idaho, I met the chief of the Forest Service, Tom Tidwell. I met with him, I did a brief for him on, on why coordination was mandated. I met with his two top planners in DC and, and they sent the word down to the regional forester. And I went to meet with him and after my meeting with him and going over the mandate of coordination, then he advised his supervisors that they should follow the planning rules that, that set forth coordination just as Congress did. And we've had confirmation since that the supervisors have been instructed to do that with the counties. So it's really in the county's hands now to, to force that issue with, without, and they should get a lot of objection from the supervisors because the word came right from the chief in Washington. Sometimes you just have to do that. Sometimes you gotta go to the top. And, and if it appears that people are dragging their feet, you know, I, I like to go up the chain, but sometimes you can't. Sometimes you have to go over them. At times, I've had to go to the Department of Justice, only four times in 20 years though. And when I've had to go to the Department of Justice, then right away, the agency turns around quickly and begins to, to get down to work. So you, sometimes you do in order to shorten time, you just have to go up, way up. And I think the issues up there are so critical and they so involve public safety at health that it won't be hard getting up to the top if we have to.
Very good. Thank you so much, Fred. Okay, Mr. Miles?
I would hope that tomorrow night, when you people start your budget hearings, that you will do something. And I want to tell you a little bit of a historical perspective and then I would like to suggest something. When we had the tidal wave in 62, the city had a attorney. That gentleman worked thousands of hours to bring this community back from disaster. He fought the battles that needed to be fought at that time. And members of the harbor, the city and the county at that time fought the same battles with people in Washington and people in Sacramento. Fortunately, at that time, we had a congressman that fought our battles too. We also had a very understanding governor at that time named Pat Brown. But we had this gentleman that fought our battles for us. I want to suggest that my city tomorrow night find the funds to hire this gentleman. And the reason is, the county and the city both need to come together to support the harbor at this time. And they're the only two bodies that are financially sound enough to hire somebody to carry our desires to Washington and to Sacramento. Because if we don't, and we don't have a crabbing season, both the county, the city, and the harbor lose. And how they lose is in the economic recovery of this community. So I think it is more important to find these funds at this time than to give money to the Chamber of Commerce and the Tourist Bureau.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. Is there other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Any questions, clarifications?
I have a few questions.
Please.
I'm curious, Mr. Grant, what, how the word coordination is defined? What, I mean, if we say they have to coordinate with us, what does that actually mean?
If I heard the question right, is what does coordinate actually mean?
Well, I know what it means. What does it mean to those that think they're going to be coordinating with us? Does that mean that they just have to notify that they're going to be taking action?
As a matter of fact, what the courts have said is that if Congress doesn't define the word, then you use the dictionary definition. The dictionary definition is equal but not subordinate. But in this case, Congress has defined the word and, and the courts in California have interpreted that to mean that the agency has got to do, has got to go to the maximum extent possible to reach a consistent position between its policy and plan and management action and those that are wanted by the local government. You have the Native Plant Association case from the California Court of Appeals that, that points out that coordinate means far more than cooperate, far more than just working together. It means coming to some consistency. And that's, and that's the same as what, as how Congress has defined it.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
And then is this resolution supposed to mean we're gonna be hiring him?
No. This, this time it's just to adopt this resolution that we are adopting the concept of coordination.
But is your, is your thought process that we need to hire him for something?
That may be a, a future issue. It's a matter, I think, of what the harbor does and/or their harbor's resources. Any other questions, clarifications?
Yes, I'd like to ask Mr. Grant. Have you read this resolution that we're proposing to adopt?
It came from Mr. Grant.
Okay, okay. Then when you were referring to the statute that Congress passed, are you still there?
Is, is that a question to me?
Yes, it is. I.
And, and it's about the statute that Congress passed?
Yes.
I quite hear the question.
Okay, what statute is that?
The Federal Land Policy Management Act of 1976. That's where the definition occurred. And then when Congress has used the word coordinate or coordination, they've used it in the National Forest Management Act, they've used it in the Homeland Security Act that governs FEMA, the, they've used it in the Clean Water Act, the Clean Air Act. It's in the National Environmental Policy Act. It's in virtually every natural resource or water resource statute that Congress has passed. And then each of the agencies that implement those statutes have, have enacted regulations that also require coordination and they require them in basically the same outline as Congress put in the Federal Land Policy Management Act.
Thank you, that answers my question.
And Mr. Grant, didn't President Obama also earlier this year offer a, a new resolution that reinforced the notion of coordination with local agencies?
I, I couldn't hear that.
Isn't it true that President Obama passed a new resolution earlier this year?
He issued an executive order on January 18th of this year that ordered all the federal agencies and, and in so doing, it, it applies also through other regulations to any state agencies that are using federal money from those agencies to review their, not only their proposed rules, regulations and decisions, but their already made rules and regulations and decisions to be sure that there are no artificial caps or, or restraints of economic advance or progress at local government. What he did in that executive order was really just issue an order to the agencies that they should follow the Regulatory Flexibility Act, which is an act of Congress that requires any agency to review its decision making or any regulation, rule or decision to be sure that there is no adverse impact on any small entity of government. And that's defined as any unit of government that has a population of under 50,000. So when you put that executive order and the, and the Regulatory Flexibility Act and the Data Quality Act together, we've. and the Data Quality Act together, we've actually been able even to bring EPA to the table in some instances and, and they like to, to impress people with the idea that they're the toughest nut to crack in the federal arsenal, but, uh, they have actually come to the table. And in Texas, it was the EPA that, that finally, uh, wielded the blow to the State Department of Transportation that caused that corridor to be withdrawn.
Very good. Okay, thank you, Mr. Grant.
I just have one observation now, and this, what, Mr. Grant is part of the Tea Party? Because this seems, I thought the Tea Party wanted less government in involvement, and this seems like another layer of government. Not that I'm opposed to the resolution, but I'm kinda confused about the mission of this whole resolution. Because if we already have the statute in place, we already have the executive order in place. I'm not really clear why we're doing this.
Uh, I guess I would offer, the, the, the reason it's being proposed is to help expedite because time is of essence. Time is everything. And if we wait for the interpretation or the bureaucracy to get around to it, there, there can, each of them have their own agendas, uh, and, and, uh, us being ready for operational crapping season is not their agenda.
So are you gonna take this resolution, if passed, and mail it to all the agencies?
I would, I would, I would offer it to, to the harbor and, and, uh, and to Mr. Grant, uh, if he's involved, and it sounds like there's a good chance he will be, and then it'll go where it needs to go accordingly. Again, I think it's about showing a solidarity and a, a unified front as a city, a county and a harbor, uh, that our priority is to recover from, uh, a, a natural disaster, uh, i- in the most expeditious way possible.
I believe also that, um, I've been partying in the past to sending this to the agencies that we deal with, um, on a regular basis so that they're on notice, basically, that they know that you're aware that they need to coordinate with you. Because a lot of times there's no awareness at the local level or at, with the agency that you're dealing with. And so, we've sent, I've been partying to sending them out. I, if you're gonna send it to the harbor or also, you know, then they'll send it out probably to their, whoever they're dealing with, uh, organ engineers and Calima, Califima, I mean, not Califima, but FEMA.
I mean, I could also imagine ultimately that, that, uh, this would be useful knowledge and/or tool, uh, for the airport JPA, uh, in dealing with the challenges associated with the airport.
Well, I think, you know, anytime you request someone to be, um, cooperative and coordinating with you is, is gonna benefit you. I'm just curious, does the harbor feel like they're not gonna get cooperation? Is that why you're starting this process? You do? You feel like, yeah? What, what makes you feel that way?
Look at the agencies you're dealing with. You're talking about the water, uh, agency, you're talking about Coastal. Uh, Coastal has, uh, opened up the window. They've said that we could start, uh, working, uh, June 1st to, I think it's October.
I, I've just, I'm just saying, I think so far they've been great. And I think I, you'd be, you should probably be careful what you say.
Well, we haven't done anything, Kelly.
Cause they can get real uncooperative real quick.
Where, well, if they do, and, you know, Fred's on board, I guess he goes to the Justice Department and tells them to get their act together. I mean, that's, that's what it sounds like he's saying to me.
My, my understanding is there was actually a fairly, a big issue missed recently when the barge was here with the large crane. And, and actually the hope was that it could have rolled into doing, uh, some much-needed work and/or assist with the dredging. As it turned out, I think it was, I heard something like 260, 280,000 dollars to bring the barge from San Francisco. And then it had to return. And now it'll have to be paid for to bring it back again.
If there's a-
So, there's an example where if we had had the coordination process in place, it could have likely helped expedite things.
And I can't say that the barge would've come back because that has to go out to bid, but, yeah. I mean, they could've been the low bidder. Again, I, I don't know how that part of it works as far as, uh, you know, you still have to go out to bid, so I don't know if that part of it can be shortened up. And, and only Fred knows that. I mean, I don't know it, that's for sure. But, uh, yeah, I'm, I, I'm really worried about it, to be very honest with you. And we've got such a short window, and every day that we stand here and talk about it is just one more day that's gone by. So.
Very good.
The things that you folks, uh, should keep in mind is that your governor, who, when he was Attorney General, was the one that filed the lawsuit against the United States to require the Forest Service, uh, to set aside a Forest Service statewide plan because they had not coordinated with the state. He used the same statutes that we would be using. And so, uh, you know, I, I know his politics, uh, come, uh, toward the top as governor, but at the same time, he does know law and he knows the law of coordination. Uh, and if it's a state agency standing in the way, uh, then, uh, you know, I, I think we've gotta get to the governor, uh, at some point and, and not too far down the line.
Are there other questions, comments? Okay, I would entertain, is there a motion?
Uh, I would be very enthusiastic about entertaining this motion and move that we approve the resolution for the City Council asserting legal standing and formally requesting coordination with all federal and state agencies, maintaining jurisdiction over lands and resources within the City of Crescent City.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, I'm clerk, would you pull the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yeah.
Councilmember Aneah?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Slert.
Yes, thank you. So the resolution passes unanimously, uh, five to nothing, and, uh, Mr. Kelly, or, uh, Mr. Grant, thank you for your support, leadership and expertise. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grant.
Thank you very much, you're welcome.
Good evening.
Okay, thank you, uh, for accommodating that modification in the schedule of events here. Um, Mr. Black, is there anything to report out of, while we're catching up, out of closed session?
Only that we are going to return to closed session, uh, at the end of regularly scheduled But no announcement at this time, based on the closed session that's occurred.
Okay, at this time we will, uh, ha- have, uh, reports, and we have two reports. Uh, first report is a received report from the Executive Director Gina Zatola regarding the Crescent City Del Norte County Chamber of Commerce. Welcome Gina.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here tonight, Mayor Slert and councilmembers.
Thank you.
Um, I'm gonna report on the last quarter, January, February, March, uh, for the visitor centers. You know, that's what I'm usually here to report on, is our statistics. And in January, we had about 283 visitors, um, come to the center. February, we had 375. In March, we had 658, for an average of 438 for the quarter. Visitor packets that we mailed out, um, in January mailed out 53, in February 226, in March, 124, for an average of 134. I wanna take this opportunity to first of all, thank the city for their continued support of the visitor center, and to also take this chance to perhaps educate some of our viewers here this evening, and that is, the money that the chamber receives from the City of Crescent City is to run and operate the visitor center and to staff it and man it. Um, the Visitors Bureau, um, markets outside of Del Norte County to bring the next new visitor to Crescent City, Del Norte County. When they get here, our visitor center is what directs them how to spend their dollars, and we try to keep them in Del Norte County so that we see increase in sales and revenues and sales tax and, um, so that's what we do at the visitor center. Are there any questions?
Uh, in, in the past, you've, uh, offered, um, the notion of, uh, the degree or percentage of increase-
Yes.
-or decrease.
Yeah. This, um, and I'm sorry I didn't do that, I didn't mean to skip over that. For January, uh, we were down about 16 percent. And in February, this is visitors again, we're starting off with just visitors, we were down about 11 and a half percent. And in March, we actually see to, saw a pretty huge decrease, and that was 31 percent. And that for the quarter makes it about 24 percent total. And I did actually call around, cause when I saw these numbers, I was a little bit perplexed. Not so much for March, I can understand March, obviously the tsunami and everything that happened. But January being down 6 percent and February, mm, but January usually we have a pretty good month. It didn't seem like we would, but to be down 16 percent. Um, the Orc Visitor Center is actually down 17 percent for the quarter.
The Oric?
Yes.
Okay.
The Orc Visitor Center. Um, and we see that Eureka Chamber is actually, excuse me, Eureka Visitor Center is actually up 9 percent. Santa Rosa Visitor Center is down 2 percent. And our local, um, state national parks across the street from us is actually at 44 percent. Now-
Down?
They're up, 44 percent. However, they feel that this is a skewed number because they also had two centers close in the North Operations area. So that would be Jedediah was not open this year, which caught a lot of people off of 199 and Jed Smith Visitor Center. Jed Smith was open, but the visitor center was not. So they feel like it got funneled all to, um, to their, to their headquarters. So. We did actually have an increase in relocation packets, and, um, so hopefully some people are thinking about moving to our beautiful community. In January, um, we had, um, six packets that went out. In February, 13, which was 550 percent increase. Crazy. And in March, we had 18, which represented 125 percent increase for, an increase of 42.31 percent.
I have a question.
Sure.
Uh, actually two. How's Fourth of July planning coming?
Fourth of July is going really great. And again, thank you to the city for their contribution to allow us to have the Far Work Show. Um, expecting a big crowd again. I don't think that's gonna change. And we've been planning, of course, I've been planning with the committee since about January, and it's moving right along. Moving right along.
Good. Second question, uh, someone from the Car Club told me the other day, this will be the last year that they coordinate the Sea Cruise. And if that, uh, becomes true, is the chamber ready to assume that entire role?
Um, it is correct that the Crescent City Car Club, um, has made this their last year. The chamber will continue to, um, bring the Sea Cruise event to the community and, um, make sure it's successful. Probably we will be looking for a partner to partner on this event. As you know, they're all very time-consuming and you really need a lot of volunteers to pull it off and, and make it great. But, yes, the chamber is dedicated to making sure that this event, um, not only for our visitors but for the community stays alive. And, um, when it fills the hotels on a weekend in October, the second week in October, when there wouldn't be any people, a lot of people in town, and we have at least a 76 percent occupancy rate, um, the chamber wouldn't turn that away.
Great, thank you.
And I can attest to that, si- as sitting on the, uh, Chamber Board of Directors for one of my appointments on the City Council, that we've been meeting on the Fourth of July, um, festivities, as well as discussing the issue of Sea Cruise, so we're, uh, working on both.
And I'm not a slave driver, like they said, at the meeting.
[laughing] She's just, uh, well organized.
Any other questions of Gina? Clarifications?
Thank you.
And thank you for your support.
Thanks Gina. Is there any public comment? Mr. Miles?
I would hope Gina, or Bob Berkowitz, or even Chris Howard would do my community a big favor. Occasionally, I pick up the San Francisco Quarter, either on Sundays or, um, when they have the outdoor page, or what's going on, on, in the Bay Area, just out of curiosity sometimes. And last week, there were two articles in it. One of them was about the casinos in California. Do you know, not a single casino in Humble County or Del Norte County was mentioned in an article about the cas- Indian casinos in California. Also, there was an article about running the rapids in California. Well, some of us know that our Smith River has some Class III and Class IV rapids this time of year. They did mention running the rapids, uh, on the Klamath, but unless somebody, Pacific Powers is letting out a little water in, on the dams, there isn't any rapids in the Klamath. The only Indian casino they'd mentioned was the Hoopa Casino. Again, for somehow, my Tourist Bureau nor my chamber gets the word out to probably, to the sports writer or the travel writer of one of the largest newspapers in California, the San Francisco Chronicle.
Thanks, Mr. Miles. Is there any other public comment? Okay, we'll close the public comment and we'll move to, uh, receive a report from Planning Commissioner Chair Kirk Roberts. Kirk, welcome.
Well, he's coming up. I just wanna say that, um, Gina Zatola is the best executive director that the chamber has ever had, and I've seen a number of them come through, so thank you Gina.
Salute.
And we support the Visitors Bureau. Uh, Kirk Roberts, Chair of the Planning Commission. I'll start off with a commercial. The Redwood Mural Society is a constituent of the Planning Commission, because they have to come before the Planning Commission to get approval for murals. And I'd like to invite everyone to watch Channel 9 at either 11:00 AM in the morning or 7:00 PM at night during the month of May to see a 30-minute video that we put together, which will be on our website also, and it's gonna be on Facebook, and it's a visitor attraction type program, uh, featuring me and Garetta L'Amour and, uh, Harley Munger and Kathleen Cressa, and lots of people have received it really well. So that's the commercial for tonight.
Thank you.
I guess I'm gonna cover two areas. The first are some of the things we've completed recently. Uh, besides the normal minor subdivisions, variances, public hearings that we hold, uh, we were very active and involved in the, uh, Beachfront Park Light Replacement Plan and selected the Coos Bay set of lights, and I have received numerous comments from people on how attractive they think they are, and they love the downlighting and the fact that it doesn't pollute the light, light pollution in the sky. Uh, we were very involved. In fact, we pushed the wind energy ordinance and then pushed it through you, and you approved it, and we thank you. To date, we have had nothing come in front of us, uh, and probably that's the economy as far as people putting in vertical units in Crescent City. Uh, but we have it on the books, and I think it's a very workable, uh, ordinance. And if we have to change it down the road because things change, we'll change it. Uh, we were very instrumental, I think, in moving the recycling bins off of Front Street over to the fairgrounds. And we continue to press the removal of that small white building and the fencing that's there and cleaning up that area, um, on Front Street. We just reviewed the grocery cart ordinance that Eric- We just reviewed the grocery cart ordinance that Eric Taylor is putting together and offered some suggestions and comments for him. An offshoot of the Planning Commission was a committee that was formed to include Rick Nolan, Rich Anea, Chief Plack, Chief Wakefield, and Rod Butler and myself to address what we felt were safety issues around Battery Point on the Fourth of July for safe and sane fireworks and to kind of reduce the liability to the city if somebody should blow up the parking lot through their drunken excitement. We had numerous meetings last year and put together a great plan, which we implemented, which basically shut off the parking lot at Battery Street. And I've talked to all the neighbors up there, and they were so appreciative because it allowed their guests to come to their house and park on their property. It allowed people to walk around the parking lot. And I think that was a direct offshoot of the Planning Commission, addressing a problem that was broad in nature. We recently worked on the CW Zone zoning amendment for Commercial Waterfront District. And tied into that, we just approved the Green Star project at the old brewery building with twelve conditions totally acceptable to the Hints family. And we look forward to them securing the rest of their permits and operating monies and moving and starting up. They hope to have thirty employees in a reasonably short time. He tells me he has years of contracts available to work on. It's a totally self-contained, inside-the-building operation. We were very diligent in saying, we don't want it outside the building. We don't want noise. We don't, you know, we love you inside, but don't take it outside. And they've been very easy to work with. Eric and I took a trip to Portland to visit their site up there. We were very favorably impressed. They ran the machines for us, and there wasn't a high, high amount of noise. So that's what we've completed. The two things that we're looking forward to working with you all on are the park master plan, Front Street changes. And we'd like to bring back a noise ordinance to you, which got kicked out rather ceremoniously a couple of years ago, with good reason. I'm not complaining about that. And the last issue would be my continual gripe with the Coastal Commission, and I hope this coordination resolution you've passed today can be used to foster the Coastal Commission working more closely with the city. In the city's benefit and recognizing who we are and where we are, and we're not Long Beach and we're not San Diego. And I think they have to, they have to take that approach because they can't apply one, one rule for the entire coast. Last of all, I'd like to thank Eric Taylor for the yeoman job he has done in the last year since Michelle left. And also Linda, who puts up with continuous questions from five commissioners and handles it very well. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to attempt them.
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
And this gets back to my question asked Thursday at the meeting about air pollution. How does one test for air pollution? If this brings a star?
A sniff. They told, no, no, they told us there are no external emissions related to the process that they are using. It's not like a smelter, which is belching smoke and steam and particulates. Everything is inside the building. They heat up the aluminum, they flatten it out, they cut it. That doesn't release emissions. The water, they have their marching orders on handling hazardous materials and water. And they have certain regulations they have to follow, which we have no control over. So I, and they know that if we get complaints, you know, we can bring the conditional use permit back in a, in a minute. We did not say we're going to review it in a year. We said we're going to review it on a complaint basis. Whether that comes to the full commission, or we go to them and say, we have a complaint about X, Y, or Z. What are you going to do about it? And he says, we'll take care of it. Then it's not going to come back to us and hopefully, not going to come to you.
I would hope it would be a reasonable complaint.
Well, that's something we'll have to address when we get it. You know, one of the things they had planned on doing was converting the patio area on the east end of the building into a part of their process. They have dropped that. So that patio area is not going to be enclosed, which benefits the apartments to the east of that area. So, you know, I think, I think it's a great project. I wish them the best. I hope they can hire thirty people. That's the best thing that's come down the pike in a long time.
If they, and just for clarification, if they had any contaminants associated with their proposed, they even hesitate to call it light manufacturing, they, they would not be inconforming with the zoning laws and codes, codes and regulations. They wouldn't be able to have contaminants as a byproduct of anything they do there.
Right. And the only real liquids that they're using that might possibly ever be a problem, or what they use in the anodizing process, and that's a closed-circuit process, and when the anodizing liquids are used up, they get carted away by the vendor who supplies it when he brings in the next order.
Great. Any other questions?
I have a couple of comments. I wanted to thank the Planning Commission for doing the heavy lifting before ordinances and whatnot come to the city council. So you do a great job and you hammer out all the details before it comes to us, and you have to do a lot of research for that. And it's very time consuming. So I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
And the other thing is, I wanted to thank the mural society for bringing visitors to our community to view the beautiful murals that you create. And while you're doing that, you also view by the city and the county. So I wanted to thank you and the mural society for that.
Well, thank you. Through Hospitality 101, we got some unknown amount, twenty thousand brochures printed up, some of which we give to Gina to put into her packages that she mails out for both people who want to move here and people who want to visit here. And we have them down at the visitor center in the motels. And I took some up to the Oregon Visitor Center. And they said, bring me more because people take them, and then they come down and they use them. And it has a nice map in it. Our last, our, our current mural is in the window of Daley's. It will be mounted shortly on the Front Street Inn. They have to remove a gutter system before we can mount it. And we are in the works and hope to announce our next one to be done this summer. Stay tuned. It's not in the city, it's in the county. It's real close to the city.
The other side of the street.
The other side of Washington.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kirk. Appreciate it. Okay, at this time, we will move to Communications and its public comment period. Any member of the audience is invited to address the city council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the city of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note, however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda item. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be part of the public record after receiving recognition from the mayor. Please state your name and city or county residency. For the record, public comment is limited to three minutes. Public comment. Mr. Miles?
Well, I don't know where to start. I'm a little disappointed in you people. And I'll tell you why. I want to know something. Last time, we had a discussion about our block grant money. Ms. Macy admitted to this council that there was some grant money because of the way the city filed our CBG request with Beachfront Park that that money was not spent. I called that at, at Kelly's attention. It went over everybody's head. We still not have heard back from Ms. Macy how my city is going to spend the portion of the block, block grant, total block grant funding that the state said the city could not spend because of the Beachfront Park project. And now going out and asking for that funding again without resolving the initial funding. I'd like Ms. Macy to come back to this council and give a confirming answer how we're going to benefit the low-income funding from that initial grant. I also have a concern. It's my understanding that Chief Plack will be retiring one of his officers. And that is Officer Zeus. That Zeus is, will be having a major operation, and then he'll come back and be retired. I really do have a concern because I think that this can become a complication for my city because technically Zeus is property. And my city has a current process on the way property is supposed to be disposed of. I'm aware that there's a former police officer that would like to bid for Zeus.
Thank you, Mr. Miles.
I think Chief Plack should have the authority to, to deserve where Zeus goes to.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. Is there other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public content or comment. And we will move to continuing business, and we will consider and/or accept a joint powers agreement with Golden State Risk Management Authority for insurance coverage. Janine, would you like to address this or? Very good. Thank you.
Delegate.
Welcome, Ken.
Hello. Tonight, we have with us tonight Scott Schemke, who is the Executive Director with Golden State Risk Management Authority. So he's here to ask or, ask or address or answer any detailed questions that you might have that didn't get asked when Dan was here. Anything else, hopefully, he or I or Bob can answer any questions that you have.
I think we want to make one clarification that there seems to be a little bit of confusion about. When we were talking about the savings, because I know you're also looking at your budgets. And so you might be thinking, what happened to the savings that you were all talking about? It's incorporated in the budget. The dividend was what got us off the hook for this last year. If, if in fact, we don't change insurances, we're looking at an additional two hundred thousand dollars added to that budget. So I think, I just wanted to clarify it when you're looking at it again.
It's not like it's, it's not like we all, all of a sudden have two hundred thousand extra dollars.
Right. See, last year's cost of insurance was two hundred thousand higher than this one. But we also got previous year dividends back that could have been from five to ten years before for paying in deposits and not paying out claims that exceeded those. So they paid those back. Well, eventually, that dividend payment is going to proceed down, and when that does, we'll see a large increase. We should still continue to see dividends coming back from SCORE for the next few years. But they have just made a recent change to their bylaws where we have to make a, I think it's a written request for a withdrawn member to do those. So I'll probably continue to go to a few SCORE meetings and do some pleadings and reminding them to follow their own bylaws that are there. So I, I think we'll still see some funds coming in. So we may even see a reduction to that because I haven't budgeted for any of those until we know for certain that they're coming in.
Why would you have to actually go?
Well, I could probably monitor it after the fact, and if it's a written request that they need, I could send in the written request. But there's some other things mechanically that SCORE does because I was involved with their finance committee. I'm probably one of the more knowledgeable board members that, that sits there to understand the implications when they have dividends that they return or assessments that they charge members. So some of those kind of things I can use to make sure they try and treat us fairly. They've just recently changed the bylaws at the last meeting in March. The member that, that withdrew the year before wasn't subject to that change. So when they had dividends, they automatically got them. Now, when you're a withdrawn member, you have to make, I think, I believe it's a written request to the scoreboard to have your dividends returned to you rather than held until the program year was closed out.
And if we withdraw, you will no longer be a board member, correct?
No, I will, the, the last chance that we will have as a voting member of the scoreboard will be at the June annual meeting on June twenty-fourth.
Well, maybe we should amend that resolution we just passed and include private companies. If it were to work, I would be for it.
But Golden State wants to give us a dividend, we'll take one.
They do give out dividends, but their philosophy on how they collect those rates and hold them over time is just a little bit different. So we've seen larger dividends with SCORE, but we've also seen larger premium deposits with SCORE than what we'll see with GSRMA.
How much was this last dividend?
I believe it's in your budget for ten eleven, and I think it was, or maybe nine, ten was in there. I think a hundred and sixty-two, a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, something in that.
That was over a decade.
Well, they don't have a clear-cut policy to say that a hundred and sixty thousand was due to two thousand and one and two thousand and two and two thousand and three. But they have certain program years that they, in their liability program that they close. Certain ones in the workers' comp program are left open because of their excess coverage. Doesn't close those also. So I think our liability claims go back maybe eight years. I think seven, seven to eight years is my memory. When, when they close out, though, there's, there's no longer claims. So then they do all their final accounting, return those funds to the members and.
Do we get interest?
They, we do in the sense that they do all their investments through Chandler Asset Management. And they have pretty good returns for their portfolio, but their portfolio, I'm thinking, was maybe twenty, thirty million. It's pretty large because it's the twenty-one-member agencies, ten years plus of deposit premiums that they haven't spent in actual claims payments. So a lot of times, they're holding some of this money in reserve for an actuarial estimate of what the future claims costs will be.
Are there other questions?
Well, this would be appropriate for Ken or Golden State's representative, but this comprehensive general liability, can you have, could you have coverage under that and property miscellaneous coverage at the same time? If something like an automobile accident occurred, would you need that?
Yeah, that's kind of, Scott will be definitely more skilled at answering something like that than me, but I think it would depend on what the injury was. There's a lot more exclusions that we have with SCORE that we, that, that GSRMA doesn't exclude. Like they, SCORE excludes employment practices. That, that's why we had to go to a separate risk pool called Employment Risk Management Authority, IRMA. They don't specifically exclude those. So we're going through one agency. We don't have to be through multiple agencies to get the comprehensive coverage we need. The other thing is flood insurance. Due to our tsunamis, we've had to have national flood insurance because SCORE specifically excludes them. GSRMA does not provide that exclusion. I mean, it's only a seven thousand, eight thousand dollar annual premium. But it's just another separate check that we had to cut in the past that we won't have to do now. But maybe if Scott would like to.
Welcome, Scott.
Good evening. I'm Scott Schemke. I'm the Executive Director of Golden State Risk Management. I live in Orland, Glen County. And your specific question was?
Well, if you have some kind of a comprehensive general liability, could you also, if something happened, could you also have the property and miscellaneous coverage? Do they, are they, do you get double coverage, in other words?
So if you had, one of patrol cars was in an accident.
Right.
And officer was injured, so there's work comp, and the vehicle's totaled, and there's your automobile coverage. That's covered under there. That's covered under there. And then if the city is somehow sued for the accident at some reason, then the liability coverage steps in and defends and indemnifies the city. So you actually have multiple policies in.
Right.
In effect with one incident.
Right. Okay. That's what I just want to understand, make sure I understood that correctly.
In answer to your question, yes, we do dividends. This year, we actually have declared, our board meeting, we meet every other month on the second Wednesday, last Wednesday we met, and the Golden State Board declared a $40,000 dividend for its membership out of the liability program. So our philosophy is to make sure that the program is fiscally sound. We also have a margin that we keep on top of that in case the actuarials make a mistake because we don't want to, we don't want to have that. And then any funds above that, we tend to give those back to our membership. They have much better places to use them and put them than in some sort of insurance program. So we tend to give money back to our members as best we can.
If I remember correctly, this, we're not, we don't become a board member for your group.
No, actually, you do. The board of Golden State, it's a seven-member board, and one of the seats is dedicated to our cities. Up until about two weeks ago, we had, we had one. We had City of Orland, they were an original member, but the City of Williams has now joined. They'll be in effective July 1st, and then hopefully you folks will take action tonight and come in on July 1st. And then what we do is we'd actually do, right now, the way it's set up, it's a random selection. We would, we would pick one of the cities to appoint somebody to serve on the board. If they don't want to or they can't, some board members don't, then they can appoint another board, another one of the city council members to sit on the board.
And do you provide like a quarterly report or?
Oh, yeah, we, absolutely. Yeah, we provide very extensive reports to our members. We also do newsletters that go out to the membership that would come to all of you. The website has a great deal of information on it. Financials, we do annually our audited financials that go to all of our membership, so you know exactly where you're at.
So if, and maybe this is a question for Ken, if we actually approve this tonight, what's our next step? Do we, do they come here and provide some kind of a comprehensive educational workshop on?
Well, GSRMA does quite a bit of training. So there would be a lot of training to get it up on board.
Right.
The resolution and all the paperwork that's in your packet is what we need to legally get started. They do a lot of online training, onsite training, so they will be doing a lot of that stuff, but it's in both our mutual interest because it's all done from the prevention mode to try and prevent future.
Right. That's what I was just curious about. I, that interested me, so I'm just curious is, do they provide that information to each department to let them know how they can assist them?
I think both that and then to, you know, whoever the city representative is, me, the city manager, and then that gets disseminated around. I think they had a training event, was it in March? For Will, and Williams wasn't even officially a member yet, and they, I think, did the training in Williams, right? Yeah, Dan had told me.
Right.
So they're pretty proactive with that kind of stuff, too.
Great.
One of the things, too, when you're asking about board members, the scoreboard doesn't specifically, it doesn't have to be an elected council person, whereas the GSRMA board, it has to be an elected person. So I couldn't be a board representative to that.
Okay.
That's really the main difference.
Great. Thank you.
One other comment I made to the planning commission.
He's left.
He's gone. Too bad. His risk management in regards to the parking lot at Battery Park in the Fourth of July, that was very good. So we're always interested when folks are looking out for the city's liability interests, so.
I have one question. It's, could the council members participate in any of those webinar trainings that you have?
Oh, absolutely. We're absolutely encouraged. In fact, we have a very extensive online training platform. We do a lot of regional training when we'll come, we'll come here and do onsite training, but we also have a very extensive online training platform. And some of the things that you folks as city council members, your harassment training, your ethics training, you can all do that online now. You can take it to this program, and that way you can fill out your requirements as opposed to sitting someplace and going to a meeting or whatever. And the very, the nice thing about it is you can start it, and if you want to do 10 minutes and then interrupt it, it'll remember where you're at and come back and keep track of it so that you don't have to sit there for two full hours if you don't have time to do that, so.
Thank you.
Very good.
And that's all in, as a part of this, the program. That's all included in what we're talking about.
I just wanted to say, I'm looking forward to it. I worked in Contra Costa County as a police officer for several years, and we had, Risk Management was the name of the company out of Walnut Creek. They did exactly what you're doing. They came and trained us, different things, how to lift things, how to properly put prisoners in patrol car, whatever it was. They trained our whole city, and they came back time and time again.
Yeah.
And it's nice to see that it's happening now here.
Very much active in training.
Yes.
Great. Any other questions? Okay, Scott, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Is there public comment?
Thank you.
Okay, no public comment, I'll bring it back to council. I'll just offer that I really appreciate the efforts on Mr. McDonald's part to make this discovery, and it does represent about $231,000 cost savings to the city, and that's with a three-year rate guarantee, which is, I think, hugely beneficial. And Golden State was selected to get to this point out of reviewing and assessing four other groups available. So I think it's been a thorough process and beneficial to the city.
And I think it's important to make the point again that even though it's a cost savings, really what it's doing is making up for some of the lost revenues that we've seen over this past year, so it's not like we have an additional $200,000 to spend.
Thank you.
And I would move to approve the joint powers agreement with Golden State Risk Management Authority for insurance coverage for the city.
I'll second.
Can you have a motion in a second?
Can I just point out one more thing? The contribution quote for the City of Crescent City, where you have liability property package and workers' compensation, employer's liability, and that's, and then you have it broken down on the next page, is that it? How you have the quote for the 311?
Yeah, that, that should include the work comp, you should have the work comp, property, and then the general liability, you'll have all those coverages, which includes the bond coverage and all those.
Sorry, I forgot to ask that. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion in a second. Ma'am clerk, would you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalone?
Yes.
Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Sler.
Yes, thank you. So the motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you very much.
Great. Likewise. Thank you. Okay, at this time we will move to new business, and item number 10A is to receive a business improvement district bid assessment report. And Janine, do you want to?
I, I believe that Ken also prepared this.
Welcome, Ken.
I think this is the first year we'll have had everything on track and at least as close to an early schedule as possible. We had the bid meeting where we passed the assessment report, was that last Thursday?
Yeah.
Last Thursday, what you have in front of you is the action that that board took on that day. They've had a reduction, the two, two major significant changes is a reduction in retail, so all retail is the same price, $150, not based on how many employees they have. And then we have the financial category reduced from $400 down to $200.
And do you have a definition for financial?
I think.
I'm just curious, I know that you.
We're using those SIC, the standard industry codes that we use for business license classification for this, and it's, that's where we're, we're waiting to get some more determination and decision on that. But I believe it's banks, mortgage brokerage firms, investment firms, all those types of things.
And has Mr. Dauber been reclassified as a professional versus a financial institute?
I think there, this was the confusing thing. Martha did some research on this, and I think if it's an agent, it's a satellite office of, of another insurance company where they have branches like all over the state and they're not independent agents, there was some difference where they're paying like a corporate tax and, and there's some reason why you can't give them a business license fee as opposed to the insurance brokers like Western Valley Insurance or something like that. It's, it's pretty confusing for that, that area. So I think for a description of the financial category, we may want to do some more research when we come back for some of these as to what that description is.
So no, he hasn't.
The issue was there were decisions made a long time ago, probably 20 years ago, that certain categories did not have to have a business license. And so that's why, I think that's why Mr. Dauber was able to stand up and say, I don't need a license from the city, I'm licensed by the state or whatever. So the, the question is going to be whether the accuracy of that determination a long time ago, and we had reason to question that. And I think Martha's research indicated, what Ken just said is that the, the exemption from business licensing was based on the home offices of, you know, big insurance companies, et cetera, and that independent agents were not exempt from business licensing. And so there's a serious question citywide, not just within bid. How, how do you want to pursue that policy? Do you want to just go with the determination from 20 years ago? Do you want to revise that and start asking for business licenses, license fees from people that have now or historically been exempted? In the meantime, the bid assessment is a completely different breed of cat. It's not a business license, it's an assessment for business improvement within a district.
Right.
And so we apply that.
Right.
And we assert that it should be applied.
I understand that. That was on my question. My question was, he's, he has been categorized as a financial institution, and he is an insurance, an independent insurance agent. So I'm asking, should he be re-categorized as a professional versus a financial institute?
That's a question that we have not been asked to look at yet, but if you want us to, we will. I think it probably should be.
I think it should be addressed.
Yeah, because what we've been trying to do in the discussions I've had with Martha so far is trying to simplify it and make it more consistent so we could explain it to the public just as easy as apply it to.
Well, because some insurance companies are financial institutions, but his, anyway, he told us during public comment that he is not.
Yeah, and trying to determine that, like even Western Valley, they're an insurance broker, it seems like they may be subject to it, but yet another agent, satellite agent, might not, so.
Well, because, but I think the difference is that, for instance, Craig or Western Valley, they offer all kinds of insurance, but they don't, they're not, they don't sell bonds or.
Make vehicle loans.
No, they don't sell bonds and they don't sell mutual funds. State Farm, on the other hand, some offices do. So if they, at State Farm, you can actually have a checking account there, and you can buy mutual funds, and I think that's where you would be considered a financial institution versus if you just sell insurance. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I'm really hoping that when we go through these final processes for bid, I mean, this is not really a related issue, but we kind of get this clarified up because we've been going on old information and no real facts that we can point out, so Martha's really been picking up and getting to some of those facts.
I think it might be helpful to define what each one of those categories means in relative to today's world.
Well, I think some of those are defined in the, in that, the standard industry classifications, and those are kind of broad, and we've tried to make them consistent, but sometimes we've come across things like this that just, in the end, they still don't seem real common sense, easy to explain and apply and go forward from there.
Maybe that's where you draw the line. Do you sell mutual funds? Do you, can you have a checking account? If you do, then you might fall under that financial institution definition, but if you absolutely do not and all you do is sell insurance, then you would be a professional.
Yeah, and I'm hoping to be able to get to that and be able to be as knowledgeable as our attorney and staff dealing directly with the public, because right now it's, we just have to go on what was done in the past and what we understand right now, and it's not as clear-cut and black and white as I'd like to see it from the accounting perspective. We're used to the black and white.
Or black and red.
Well, ignore the red.
Black and red.
Yeah.
Preferably black.
Yeah. Any other questions I can address, and I have a couple of the bid board members here too, if there's any other additional things needed.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I, I didn't see any mention of the city kicking any RDA money in.
No, in that one, when Rod and I had talked about that before, the RDA attorney had said that that is a possibility, but it would have to be very strict, specific rules to apply and use those funds. Now with the redevelopment agencies kind of almost in a black hole in space, we don't really know where that's been. So we, we could still look towards that once the dust settles on this, but we haven't really factored that into their budget or even, even our budget from this perspective, too.
Actually, in reviewing our budget that we're going to be looking at tomorrow night, I saw dollars set aside for bid.
Well, we have them in our project costs, so they may, it may have been a carryover from last year. I don't remember and don't have in front of me, but I really think that Bob would probably concur and any city manager that we have, until we get some definitive answers as how we can spend it, we've been extremely cautious in what we're doing.
Not in RDA. I just saw on.
Oh, it's in the, we have it in the GL, isn't it?
General fund.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so that would be up to this council at budget time.
But the RDA at this point, we don't have, to my knowledge, we have no funds allocated.
I can't, I can't remember off the top of my head.
No. It wasn't under RDA, it was in the general fund, and it was, it was in the same line item as Chamber of Commerce, tri-agency.
Yes.
Bid.
Well, and see, and theirs is the one that's kind of confusing because I think we started the year in July with a $4,200 balance, and so as part of our general fund reserves, they are the bid assessments that have been set aside. So I mean, we're looking at a $12,000, you know, revenue estimate for this year, but we're probably going to estimate maybe spending, I think, $18,000. At this point in time, the budget that we have there might only have $10,000 in expenses because a lot of this stuff wasn't finalized, and so, you know, we will definitely want to make sure that 18,947.50 gets put in any future budget divisions that are out there. But that's why, that's where you would see a case where your expenditures would be higher than revenue because they're spending some of the reserves left over from the previous year. And then this year, we had a large budget, but I think we're maybe 40%, so they're real under on their spending, but there were so many questions as to what was going on, the board really didn't expend a lot of money that they had planned on a year ago.
And, and my, I just want to clarify from my own personal, in approving this assessment report, are we approving their new budget for expenditures? Because if so, I'll need to recuse myself just in case they do business with our company in the future.
I believe that's true. The budget's in here. No.
I think this is just the resolution of intent to levy and it starts the whole process.
My perception was just that it's just the levy assessment and it's not the budget.
Yeah, it's strictly the levy, it's strictly the revenue side. Now, there may be budget information provided, but.
Normally, our process is, we want this assessment report to the council or to the city by the middle of April, and the reason for that is because then we can incorporate some of these things into the budget. Because of the delays we had and some other issues, this is just coming up now, and so we were basically, at the same time this was going on, we were building our budget, so everything was going on concurrently.
Yeah, because the action is just to pass the resolution to collect the assessments.
Actually, it's, it's a resolution declaring your intention to levy and collect assessments. In other words, it's very, it's preliminary to the ordinance itself, which is the effective article that creates the assessment. And so you're just launching the process so that people have a knowledge of what do you intend to do? And that takes you to the next step.
Okay, thank you.
When Craig was here last meeting, he mentioned that he wanted to see bid disbanded. Now I see a letter from him dated April 11th, reiterating that, either disband it or make it voluntary. Has everybody received this letter?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so has anything changed? Has anyone heard that his opinion has changed?
No.
No.
He's one person.
Well, what he does is make a good point that the recent bid 2011 member survey, 76% of those who responded said that they did not support the continuation of bid. What happens to a proposition or candidate when 76% of the public votes no or for the other person who was mentioned at a bid meeting? It was mentioned at a bid meeting after the survey was completed that only 46 came back of 114 sent out, and that may make the results questionable. During an election, when 46% of the public votes, that is considered a large number, and the results are not changed. I have spoken with many other Crescent City business owners, and all of them also want bid disbanded. Your cooperation as a matter will be appreciated.
Ms. Westfall, weren't you at the last council meeting when we had this conversation about bid?
Yes.
Well, and didn't we talk on several issues? We talked about that there was a survey done by the triplicate. There was two vote counts from being a dead-even heat, and there were, it was a discussion also that several people apparently didn't respond to the original survey, because it required identifying their name and address and local business, and so they withdrew from offering that survey information. So, we had those conversations.
Yes, we had those conversations, and when it comes to the triplicate running a poll, that doesn't mean a whole lot, especially when it comes to the bid district and those who have to pay these assessments, so I disregard that. But what do we do? Do we go ahead and, you know, pass this intention to levy assessments and then wait for bid members to say, "No, we're not going to pay them," as he promised?
That's, he can choose to do what he chooses to do as an individual. I attended the last board meeting, the bid board meeting, I'd been happy if you could have joined us there. It was an orderly meeting. The board was very responsive and made changes on the spot after a dialogue and conversation. They voted on probably eight or 10 issues, and every one of them were either a four-to-one vote or a five-to-nothing vote. So, it was a very democratic process. Everybody was offered input, and I thought the bid was, actually, board was well-functioned, and it indicated that the bid is turning the corner, and that it's good for the community, and they're moving together forward. That's what came out of that meeting. Again, I think it has to do with involvement. It's one thing to cast stones, it's another thing to get involved and participate, and when the people are there participating, I think there was a whole different attitude and sense of organization, I think. Is there other questions?
Well, I don't think it's just a matter of the levies. I think the surveys are very clear on the dissatisfaction with the bid.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yes, I have some comments. I've attended bid meetings for the last four years, and I participate as a resident, and I participated in helping in the Halloween parade and other things. I like bid, but when they take a vote, and 46% of them respond, 46% responded, and 76% don't want it, and 62% don't even want to reduce by 50%, I have to listen to that. I don't buy the argument that people were afraid to vote, because, you know, when you vote absentee, you have to put your name on the outside of that ballot and your address. What's to keep the person from opening that ballot to see how I voted? So, people should be afraid to vote absentee.
What person?
The person that opens the absentee ballot.
That's one person.
Right, so that, when you vote in bid, I didn't think that that was people being afraid. And if people don't want to pay that assessment anymore, I don't think they should have to pay that.
I think what Mr. Slert was referring to, Ms. Anea, is that some of the business owners said they didn't want their vote to be a public knowledge, because they're afraid of, you know, people not supporting their business anymore.
It's not public knowledge, it's not public knowledge, and...
It was, that was the problem.
Did we give it out publicly?
Yeah.
Well, when we gave out the survey, we didn't indicate that they would be held confidential.
Right.
We ended up not disclosing, you know, we cut out the section and then scanned them and made it that way, but, you know, in all fairness, there were, there were some people that I know personally that came up to me and said, "You know, I have a business that I really didn't want to vote yes or no, because I was afraid of the impact it would cause."
I would suggest that we either make it voluntarily for now, not get rid of it, but make it voluntarily, or we redo a vote and make it clear that their names are not going to be used.
I guess I would offer, Ms. Anea, on some level, it has been voluntary for the past few years.
Right, that's how it's been, yes.
Because the city fell down in its responsibility to collect the fees or the assessments.
Exactly.
And they were inconsistent about it, and I think the reflection of what occurred or didn't occur is, you know, it's very evident that left of volunteerism, it doesn't succeed. It had a lot of bumps and grinds and problems, that's the reason the city got involved and particip, started participating in the, in the bid board with the liaison representatives and working with the bid, trying to move things forward, and invested actually a lot of money with the attorney effort of putting the house in order legally and structurally.
Okay.
I have a question for Mr. Mayor.
Please.
You were at the last bid meeting. In our minutes from our last meeting, you stated that the council should wait until the bid board has their strategic planning session, and for that information to be brought before the council, before any recommendations are made. Did the strategic plan occur?
They've had their, they've had their annual plan, but I don't think they've had their strategic plan where they were bringing the consultant up from Eureka. And I, and I think they can still bring that. I'd be happy to have bring, but I mean, on some level, what they've brought before us is some indication of where they're at, in very specific terms.
That's why I wasn't clear about it, because I do see some plans here, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I think what the original plan was, is to have the strategic plan workshop, and then do their assessment report, but with all the delays and everything, it's kind of, I think we had bad weather, and the people, I think they were coming from Fortuna, couldn't make it up here, so that got delayed, and then we had to go through with this, because otherwise we'd be in the same situation as last year, where it wouldn't take effect until beginning of September. Now, we're in a situation where the assessment could take effect when we're ready to send out the business licenses. Last year, we had to do it a two-part process, because we were changing some of the rates in the middle.
And I appreciate the fact, too, that the board lowered the rates for the largest assessments, so literally, the average assessment for, for one year is about $100.
Yeah, Charles would probably vouch for it, too, when we were there. I thought it was very responsive that they went and did that. I expected to see more naysayers here, and really, this is the chance where they should, you know, this and the public hearing that comes up on June 6th is really the chance. If there's that much negativity towards it, the council doesn't pass the intention to levy, and then, you know, it pretty much can start dying in its tracks, but, you know, I think some of the biggest vocal critics, maybe they got their assessment cut in half, maybe that took the wind out of their sails, I don't know, I haven't seen...
Also, that there's private partners chipping in, too, with Pacific Power making a $2,000 to $4,000 contribution as well.
Not to mention reductions in advertising that the triplicate gives to bid that no one member can have access to.
That shows to me that, you know, large companies like Pacific Power see the benefit of a business improvement district.
Thanks, anything else, just let me know.
Well, no, not for you, Ken, I just, sorry, I just went. So, I too am appreciative of the reduction in the proposed annual assessments. I'm wondering, though, because of the fact that there is a group that does not want to have bid at all, if we can find a compromise for if a business owner or a booth owner, say, for example, they're not, they're not making it in their business for whatever reason, if there's a clause that we could build in to perhaps request a suspension based on some criteria, such as the financial statements, their balance sheet, and their profit and loss, so that they could verify that they are really not making ends meet, something like that, so that we aren't creating a hardship, in other words, for, for members, if they can prove, prove that they really are having trouble staying in business, because we want to support our businesses as much as possible. And I really don't like the idea of holding businesses hostage either, so, but I, I too believe that bid is a good tool for businesses, that there are those naysayers, so I'm trying to listen to everyone, everyone concerned.
I guess I offered on previous occasions several times, that to me, it was, especially with the survey that was done originally, that it never was a money issue. I think, I think it was an issue of personalities, and I still believe that. When, when people were offered an opportunity to have the fees reduced by 50% by the participation of bid, or RDA with bid, and the answer was still no, it tells me that money's not the issue. I assure you that as an architect, my business is probably struggling as much or more than any other business downtown, and if $50 or $100 over a period of 12 months is a dealmaker, there's bigger problems.
So, I think you could have a waiver program, but I would definitely not recommend it, because I don't think it would be worth the staff time to process...
Well, and I don't think that a business owner is going to want to produce a financial statement for a $50 fee.
Yeah, or even a $150 fee.
It's going to cost them more to go to their accountant and get a financial statement than the $50 annual fee.
I'm just trying to find a compromise here.
And I think that's a good instinct, but I don't think...
The compromise is in the fees being reduced.
It's probably just not practical.
Is there a public comment?
Yeah, there is.
Mr. Miles?
Janine, I'll be nice, but I'm not going to be nice.
Where did you miss the door?
That was the other Richard.
I think this council needs to review the history of bid. Way back, no, because you haven't to date, and especially Ms. Westfall, and I think Richard Anea. A number of years ago, a city council decided to adopt the highway code to dealing with downtown improvement district. That was a decision of the city council. It wasn't the decision of the business community. The business community went along with the decision of the city council. If you would go back and review the minutes, if those minutes could be found, the business improvement district is not only for, for the given location of the downtown area, but it's also about the community. It's to draw people to the downtown area. I want to thank our financial director and our assistant city attorney, because for a number of years, bid was a loosely formed organization. Kelly Swong made a suggestion when she was mayor, what was completely legit, Ms. Westfall, that the rules and the regulations need to be tightened. I want to thank Cheryl and Belly K for their dedication, because they have worked hard to remedy a program that my city neglected. And Mr. Anea, if you don't realize that, shame on you. Then, what happened was the assessments were done wrong. I believe they were done wrong, and I want to give you some examples. You've got businesses, you've got beauticians. They work for a shop. Not all the beauticians should be charged that work for, for a shop. That's ridiculous, because those beauticians are employees. If you've got people like Mr. Dauber, who isn't a financial institution, but you've got people like the Youngs that do sell financial things, there's a difference.
Thank you, Mr. Miles.
The thing is, either shit it or get off the pot.
Thank you. Is there other public comment? Cynthia?
Cindy Speckman from the county, but I have a business here in town. I just want to say that it has never been the money with me personally. It has been, I wanted to know what everyone in the bid district, not outside, but the bid district, how they felt about this. And it seems like every survey or poll that is polled, everyone is saying they don't want it. You can sit and you can argue percentages of who voted, who didn't vote, the bottom line is they said no. It's a tax, plain and simple, and I think it's better served by being voluntary. The bid itself cannot be voluntary, never has been, never will be. It's a mandated tax, plain and simple. We don't want it. Thanks.
Thank you. Excuse me. Mr. Miles? Is there other public comment? Cheryl?
You should sit down front.
Welcome.
Cheryl Corpstein, Bid Vice President, County Resident. I thank the council tonight for looking at our proposed assessment and considering levying the assessments. I think that we have spent a lot of time in the last year arguing, probably over the pennies, when we should have been looking at the big picture and the dollars. And the bottom line is, is it's not a vote of the business improvement district, no matter what misconceptions we have, and certainly you would like something that everyone supports rather than something people don't like, but this is something that the council alone gets to decide on. And I appreciate that you listened to public comment, I appreciate that you are being responsive. I feel that unfortunately for the tool that we have in front of us, it's been tarnished. It's like a hammer that got left out in the rain and is dirty and unused, and now we're looking at throwing it away, because we don't really know what we want to do with that dirty hammer, instead of picking it up, cleaning it up, and using it for what its purpose is, which is to rebuild and build up what we have. I heard a great speaker this weekend at my daughter's graduation, Kevin Haynes, founder of the Warriors Wish Foundation, who grants wishes to terminally ill veterans. He said, "Lead, follow, or get out of the way." He was a little, not as nice as that. And that's where we're at today, we need to be leaders in our community, and we need the business district to step up and be the leader of the community, to create that center where people come together. I know most of you were downtown at the art walk. It was wonderful to see people on the streets, to see people open, I know dollars were spent, things exchanged hands. Everyone had the opportunity to participate and be around. Those kinds of things are not going to happen if we don't continue to try to strive to have a business district. And so, again, I, I hear people who say, "I just don't like it and I want it gone," and everyone's entitled to their opinion, but I do say, we have a tool, and I think we should try to use it before we abandon it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there other public comment? Okay, back to the council. I'll reiterate what I said last time, that bid is about 4,000 city residents... I'll reiterate what I said last time, that BID is about 4,000 city residents, it's about 562 city businesses, it's about 114 downtown businesses, it's about 20,000 residents in the county, plus or minus, that can use and do use downtown, and it's about having a healthy downtown.
I move to consider and adopt a resolution 2011-21, declaring our intent to levy and collect the assessments for the Business Improvement District.
Have a motion?
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you pull the vote, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Councilmember Westfall?
No.
Councilmember Shlong?
Yes.
Councilmember Anea?
No.
Mayor Protem Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Slert?
Yes. So the motion carries three to two. Thank you very much. And with that, we will move to item number 12.
11.
I'm sorry. And so, at this time, we will consider and approve the outside auditor's request for an audit contract extension. Mr. McDonald?
For the last three years, we've had Donald R. Reynolds and Associates, basically the entire time I've been here. We have... He has presented a contract extension, keeping his costs exactly the same as what they are currently, for another two years. I think the recommended time period for auditors is, I think it's usually about five to seven years. You don't want to have one more than seven years. But this would be, because when we first started him, we were basically behind in the year that we got. So we finally got in a couple of years of caught up, and now I think it's in a situation where if we do another year or two, we can keep on that schedule and then maybe start a procurement process for another audit there. I think it'll be best, from the city staff perspective, to keep that consistency there because the education curve that a new auditor has is already there. So a lot of the items that they've looked at and noticed, not only in this current year we're in that they'd be auditing, but next year, which starts in July, it would be a real nice to have a new city manager in place, to have some of those actions tested by the same auditor that has kind of seen some previous things come up. We don't have any major items out there, but we do have some procedural things. We had some additional test work done for our purchasing procedures and found some of our policies weren't followed like we'd like. So we're trying to put together some things to remedy that and put it in place. With Janine here, we've tightened that up real good in the two, three months that she's been here, and we're hoping that we can handle that, hand off that nice, tight-wrapped package to the next person and go forward from there. I do have the auditor here, if there's any specific questions. I wasn't aware of any that we'd have, but I asked him if he was going to be in town. He was in town for something else to come to the meeting tonight to address you guys if you have any questions.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Just a statement. I was on the founding audit committee for the first time for the City of Crescent City, and we hired Mr. Reynolds, and he's been great to work with. And I would just like to ask if the current audit committee has met with him and/or reviewed this contract?
The current audit committee has met with him, and we discussed his contract a little while ago, as I recall.
Yeah, in February.
And are you having public meetings?
We've had a meeting at the city hall.
Usually, the audit committee, when they have a meeting, is public, so it's open to the public.
We did that before, and then I think last year, when we changed it to an ad hoc committee member, there's only two council members, so they can be open to the public. But it's not a standing committee meeting, so there's no ground act and agenda.
Gotcha.
And that was done as a thing to simplify the administration of it. We didn't have to take minutes and all that kind of stuff. But in the beginning, when we started out, we did have a publicly held audit, with two council members and the elected city clerk, and we did keep minutes of that. But we had so many management letter issues in the beginning when we got here that it was probably good to make sure that those changes got...
Trying to be very transparent about dealing with each of those issues. Thank you.
I have a question.
Please.
When we met the ad hoc committee in February, we had discussed extending the contract to include a capital improvements study.
Yeah, we have that now. Janine and I were looking at that. We were trying to figure out how to incorporate that in our budget. Don has presented a proposal for looking at some of that, but we weren't really ready to address that right now. We really wanted to address this because it would be an audit of the current year. So if we don't extend this contract, we would really have to get running fast to get a procurement process out and secure another auditor. So it was just a time efficiency thing, so why that's not forward yet, too.
And as your budget workshop material, we were introducing the capital improvement plan and something different. So I haven't had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Reynolds yet either, but that is something that I knew that we'd formulate. And so, it's at the very beginning stages, and we will, if he assumes the contract or we sign a contract with him, then we'll sit down and talk to him.
Yeah, I think if we would have been further along in the budget process, it probably would have came forward. But because we're still kind of, well, at least last week when we were getting the agenda together, we were...
As of Friday at 5:00.
Yeah, well, I didn't want to let everybody know it was that close to the wire, but we got the agenda done before we got the budget done.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
I would just offer that I've appreciated working with Mr. Reynolds, and I think he's always been very responsive, he and his office. And I think this extension is timely for the city to get us down the road the next three years here.
Shake public comments, so I can make a motion?
Pardon me?
I said I'd like to make a motion.
Is there any public comment? Is there a motion?
I'd like to approve the contract extension with Don Reynolds for the 2011, 12, and 2012, 13 fiscal years.
10, 11, 12, the current year.
It has 13 out here, too.
Sorry. Now through 2013.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you pull the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Councilmember Shlong?
Yes.
Councilmember Anea?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Slert?
That's a yes. Thank you. So the motion carries unanimously, five to nothing? Thank you for enduring this evening, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you for bidding.
And David.
Yes.
Now you feel the pain of all those minutes you read. Good night.
Okay, at this time, we will move on to new business item number 12, and it's actually our last item, since we've already visited number 13. And number 12 is to consider and approve the resolution entitled Resolution 2011-22, a resolution approving, authorizing, and directing execution of an amendment amended and restated joint exercise of powers agreement relating to the California statewide communities development authority. And I was going to say, does Janine want to introduce that?
Mayor, I brought this item forward to the agenda. It came to my attention and somewhat to my surprise, when the council was requested to participate in the issuance of bonds to build the Summer Park Apartments, that the City of Crescent City was not a member of the California statewide communities development authority. There are something on the order of 480 cities, counties, and special districts in the state of California that are members. There are a number of advantages to being a member. Probably the primary advantage is that the joint powers authority is able to issue industrial development bonds, revenue bonds, and in so doing, packages the programs and special interests of individual small communities, and thereby reduces, takes advantage of the both taxable and tax-exempt bond markets, and reduces the issuance costs, which can completely overwhelm a small bond, because, you know, the lawyer's fees, the underwriter's fees, bond counsel fees are basically somewhat irreducible beyond a certain point, no matter how small your issuance is. This JPA packages the issuance of debt so that the issuance costs become a relatively small fraction of the debt, and then they allow individual communities to pick up their portion of the total debt that's issued. They have other programs above and beyond the nonprofit housing sector. They finance public infrastructure. They also have a joint buying program where all these cities, counties, and districts have banded together to buy or to negotiate very good deals on hardware supplies, that sort of thing. I don't know, because I haven't taken it that far, whether we would directly gain advantage from that, but we certainly might. So there's no cost to joining, there's no obligation to participate in any given financing option until your council is ready. They cannot finance anything that is not approved by your council. And so, by joining now, you're just eliminating a step that you would have to take sometime in the future and becoming part of this network.
So it's really, to put it in layman's terms, the city joining a superstore or Costco?
Yeah.
For bonds?
That is true, but there's not even a $50 a year dues to be a Costco member.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Clarifications?
It's nice to do something ahead of time.
At no cost.
No cost. Move to approve Resolution 2011-23. I'm sorry, 22.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any public comment? Okay, seeing none.
I don't believe so. We don't need a polled vote, do we, Bob? There's no financial...
Yeah, you know, that's why they do, at the end of resolutions, they have eyes, nose, absence, and abstains. Yeah. Resolutions need a... Resolutions need a...
Even add the abstain.
Poll vote.
Sorry.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Wow.
Yes.
Is my face red?
So I'll go ahead and take a poll. Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Councilmember Shlong?
Yes.
Councilmember Anea?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Slert?
Yes. So that motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, so that concludes the direct business, if you will. Any legislative matters from anybody?
I thought it was interesting, when I read the chamber newsletter, that all of the anti-business legislation is being presented to the legislature by Democrats.
Yeah. Interesting, huh?
Yeah, I thought that was very interesting. I have no idea why.
Maybe you ought to figure out what the Chamber of Commerce is all about and what their partisan leanings are.
Yes, especially the state chamber.
The federal chamber.
And the national chamber.
Yeah, the national chamber, yes.
Gave over $70 million to the Republican Party in the last, in the 2010 elections. Seventy million.
Because they support business?
Well, I don't know.
Sorry.
That just tells you something.
That this chamber is not a member of the national chamber.
It's not a member. It's good news.
No, this is the state.
That's good news.
This is the Cal chamber.
Right.
Sent an update. I just thought that was interesting.
Are there other legislative matters?
Pretty much just sort of wait.
Okay. Okay. So we'll wait for reports. Mr. Anea?
Well, I can tell you about a travel, non-council travel. I've visited the state of Florida in the last two weeks, I've visited the country of Aruba, I've visited the country of Colombia, I've visited the country of Panama, I've visited the country of Costa Rica, I've visited the country of Mexico, and I'm home.
Wow, that's a big rotary fine.
Yeah. You know, actually, I had my wife take a picture of me in Colombia in this store that had a big rotary wheel, because they were looking for contributions for kids for some cause, and so there I am standing. So I was on rotary business.
I don't think that you should point out every country, because I think in our rotary club, it's like a $100 fine every time you go to another country.
I was on special assignment from the international president of rotary. And I have a picture to prove it.
Well, welcome back.
I'm sure the Sunrise Rotary President will think of something.
Yes, I'm sure he will.
Ms. Merritt?
Yes, well, I had a lot of meetings, committee meetings last week, the senior center, the Chamber of Commerce, the Intergovernmental Relations Committee meeting, the Local Transportation Commission meeting, and solid waste. And I would like to offer congratulations to the County of Del Norte, and in particular, the appointment of Martha McClure, so congratulations, Martha, as the most recent appointment to the California Coastal Commission. I know she'll do a good job in representing smart growth in the County of Del Norte. And I also, on a personal note, attended my daughter Lauren's graduation commencement ceremonies from Humboldt State.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
One down.
Ms. Shlong?
I don't know if she was done.
No, I already did.
Are you done?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I attended the Solid Waste Management Authority meeting. We continue to have ad hoc committee meetings. We have another one tomorrow. Attended the El Calle Ranteria Utilities Ad Hoc Committee with Mayor Slert. Attended our airport meeting, JPA meeting in Brookings this year. We took our show this year. This month, we took our show on the road. And what's interesting is afterwards, I met with the city manager for Brookings, Gary Milliman, and Curry County Commissioner, George Rhodes, and myself, and Supervisor Hemmingson, and Mr. Black. And we started the discussions of talking about regional economic development efforts. So I think it'll be interesting to see where that goes. And attended the Gold Beach Wine Art and Music Festival this weekend. It was a great event. I think we could, I think we should do one here. It was very successful. And I have one issue I wanted to bring up at our Solid Waste Management Authority meeting in talking about city. It was brought to my attention that the city has a six-yard bin at the Cultural Center that gets picked up three times per week. And I thought that was ridiculous, I think that was the word I used. And they, and I think Tommy mentioned that sometimes it's not full. So we need to reevaluate that location and the size and look at some recycling efforts.
Well, is that, do you know if that is for the city to just use it there where it's out of the way?
All I know is that's what I was...
It's part of the...
Six-yard bin, and it's part of the, it's one of the two bins that Recology picks up for, and is for free, I believe, through Solid Waste. The city doesn't, I mean, the Solid Waste doesn't charge the city for it.
No, that might be because at the Cultural Center, where we used to have a lot of activities at that center. Maybe that's why it's so big.
Anyway, I just think it needs to be looked at.
I agree. I agree with you.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, I forgot one thing.
Uh-oh.
I wanted to mention the LRTs having their fundraiser June 4th, so please reserve the date.
What date is it?
June 4th.
And I was just going to mention that my Congressman Thompson will be in town on May 20th for his annual pasta dinner.
Great.
At the Cultural Center this year.
This coming Friday.
Yep.
Great, thank you. Ms. Westfall?
My husband and I attended the Crescent City Art Walk, and I want to just say congratulations. You did a beautiful job. That was one of the nine... That was one of the nicest functions we've ever attended in the city. The music, they had steel drum bands playing on Third and H Street. They had a jazz duo playing in the art gallery that we thought was fantastic. And we're just sorry that we didn't get started sooner to take in all of the shops that were open to it. It was an excellent, excellent, delightful thing. Let's see, on May 10th, Tuesday, I went to the Tea Party Patriots meeting, where they had a woman named Orlean Cooley, the state president of Eagle Forum of California, who wrote a book called Self and Deception in Government. Talk about that, and talk about smart meters and the problem going to smart meters. They had a raffle. One of the gals won that booklet that she wrote about smart meters, which is taking an analog electrical meter and making it digital. And the good part about it is so that it's easier to read. You can just... Meter reader can drive by and, I guess, just read it. But the bad thing about it is that then the power company has the capability to regulate when you use your appliances. So that's a little bit too much Big Brother for me. And I will bring that booklet and share it with the rest of you. On May 11th, I went to the Solid Waste Management Authority Board Meeting and was surprised, shocked, and dismayed that there was a 5% scheduled step increase in their salaries. On May 12th, I went to the prayer group held every other Thursday at the Nazarene Church from 8:00 to 9:00 in the morning, and invite anybody from the public to join us. Doug Morgan from Community Assistance Network was there, who talked about a meeting that afternoon at noon at the Wellness Center. So I went over to see what that was all about, and we had most of the... A good portion of the ministers and pastors in the area meeting and discussing some of the problems in the community and see if we can take action about that. And one of the things I was surprised to learn is that Planned Parenthood has a presence on the school site, whereas the Pregnancy Care Center does not. So that was a little bit surprising to me. And then I had a meeting with some concerned citizens on the current electric rate recently increased, saying it's creating an unusual hardship for them, and wanting to know if Mr. Fred Kelly Grant's 10th Amendment and Coordination could do something, help us reverse or reduce some of those fees. And finally, I had a call about a woman who went down to our city hall looking for a building permit application, was told they don't have any paper building permit applications. She had to go on the website. Is that correct, Jim?
No.
Okay. All right, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have a laundry list of items here. I was at a... Attended a coordination meeting with the Chamber of Commerce with Mayor Protem Murray at the chamber's request. I attended with Janine the Fire District City Joint Meeting that we have annually, and three issues were discussed, proposing having a... Designating or naming a duty officer or a duty chief in lieu of Fire Chief Steve Wakefield, who sometimes has to be out of town on business and has a hard time ever getting away from a personal standpoint. So they have an interest in identifying a duty officer and a duty chief. They also are talking about bringing the Fire District trucks to the city for their servicing, so that would be a new income revenue for the city. And then they're discussing annual training program, and the notion that although the city represents one-third and the Crescent Fire District represents two-thirds of a 50-50 split associated with any training program. Remember that the training programs are important because it keeps the firefighters abreast with the newest technology and latest means and methods, and it also helps from a liability standpoint for the city. And I also attended the kickoff meeting with our city engineer, Mr. Barnes, for the Front Street Design Team, and I think it was very successful. Attended the RCTA Board Meeting, the LTICO Board Meeting. I had various meetings with various harbor commissioners regarding expediting and coordinating the harbor recovery and process. Attended the BID Monthly Board Meeting. Attended the El Valley Rancheria Ad Hoc Utilities Meeting. Attended the Police Department Facility Disaster Mitigation Consultant Planning Session, where we discussed program and site assessments. And then attended the Airport JPA Meeting held in Brookings as an observer, and I thought that was actually very positive as far as the partnership with Brookings is concerned. And I'd be interested, Ms. Shalung, how things develop so that we can become more of a twin city, even though there's a border imaginary line between us. And then I just wanted to salute the Hospitality 101 New Visitor Brochure that's just come out that is absolutely outstanding, and I think it's going to help brand and promote Crescent City and bring tourists here. So with that, I'll... We'll adjourn to close session, and then our next regular meeting is actually tomorrow, a budget workshop, May 17th at 5:30 p.m. at the wastewater treatment plant. And I would encourage the public to join us for your perspectives and input regarding the budget. Thank you. Chief?
I just want to remind the council, as well as everyone else, that we're having the Every 15 Minutes at the high school this Thursday at 10:30 for the prom, for the devastation of drunk-driving residents. So just want to remind everybody, 10:30, yes.
And are you going to bring Mr. Sullivan?
Excuse me?
Are you going to bring Mr. Sullivan to a meeting to recognize his award?
Well, soon as it's all... Probably later on. Probably not.
You know what I'm talking about? MAD. Joe Sullivan, MAD Award.
Oh, oh!
You do. Be nice. I think anytime our officers are acknowledged by outside groups, it'd be cool to let the public know. No, we're not.
Okay.
I know, but they left him.
Now we are.